I had to run home.
Who is missing Peter and Ann? Can we all sit?
Just one sec.
Can we all sit?
Uh-oh.
Here, I'll just say Jason.
Oh, I don't want to hear myself. That's not going to be good.
I heard you over here.
The recording?
Like a delay on it?
It's just a record, not a recording, it's just a record.
Hey, Jason, when we do get to the Grange Hall, I've got to talk about not being here last week.
Oh.
Just throw it upon your, the mercy of the board. I've read the minutes, watched the video.
Okay.
Exciting stuff.
Okay.
Riveting.
Now we all set? Okay. All right, welcome to the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two Cumberland Planning Board Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, we are missing Peter Bingham and Ann Sawchuck tonight, but we do have a quorum. And before we get started, I will mention Tig Filson is here, our newest member of the Town Council, who will be our planning board liaison, comes with hundreds of hours of work, so I'm glad she's here. Okay, moving on. Item C, approval of minutes from the June twenty-first, twenty-two meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, anything fixes that weren't taken care of prior? I know Ann emailed Christine and had some fixes, so, okay, all in favor? And all opposed, and abstentions, okay. Josh is abstaining. Moving on to D-one, staff site plan approvals, major staff site plan review. We had one for the salt shed for Middle Road, which we recently took up, and the salt shed had just a small bit remaining that I talked with Carla about. There was one small question about the size of the salt shed and the footprint of it relative to the old building that they were replacing, and some extra concrete block storage areas that were outside of that footprint, but those don't count. So that moves forward. Minor change approvals, there were none, so we'll move to hearings and presentations. Item F, so the first one is a public hearing for an amendment to an approved subdivision and site plan for the market Cumberland Forside located in the Office Commercial South Zone at one oh two US Route One, tax assessor map R zero one lot thirteen B for a minor change to the location of an approved concrete equipment pad and to add a concrete equipment pad for an emergency generator. Owner Cumberland Forside Partners, Representative Dan Diffin from Sevian Maher. So before we get started, Carla, do you have anything to add?
I really don't, it's yet another amendment for this project that I think's really getting close because I saw the for sale sign down on Route One, so it's actually going to be happening, it looks like. But yeah, just another, you know, as they've gone through the bidding process and figured out exactly how things are going to work, they need to add a couple of little concrete pads, and that's what this is.
All right, before we move on, any questions of Carla from the board? Okay, moving on, take it away.
Yeah, so my name is Jeff Reed, I'm obviously not Dan, but here to fill in for him this evening to present this project to you folks. And yeah, as Carla had mentioned, it's a pretty simple and straightforward, it's a project that's been approved. The only changes to the approved site plan, I can show you actually on the, using my cursor here, there was a concrete pad that was shown here that was included on the original plan. This was rotated ninety degrees for a better connection to the building. And then the only other change was that we had added a pad here to support a generator, which would be used in emergency situations only. There's a wood stockade fence around it to shield it from view from the apartment. You know, there were no changes in the pavement here, this was already an existing cutout and island, and it just worked out that that was a great place to fit it. Those are the only changes to the plan.
Okay, and I see that there's still a main DEP permit outstanding, is that right? I saw that in the packet, Carla.
The DOT entrance, I think, was the issue, yeah. Do you know if you have that yet?
You know what, I'm not sure if that was in there, Dan had told me that everything was done except for these two items.
It was a condition of approval before, so I just left it in there, we'll catch it at pre-con, whether it's there or not.
That sounds great, he didn't outline it in his response memo to you, so I'm assuming that status has not changed.
Okay.
Have you got one question?
Go for it, Paul.
Just one thing, one minor discrepancy, on the first page you list the pad for the generator as five point five by fifteen point five, and then on page twenty-two you have it as six point five. So those two ought to probably match, just to be accurate.
Sure, I believe the correct dimension is six and a half by fifteen and a half.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, come up to the mic, introduce yourself. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for further action.
I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of facts in the Route One design standards, since they have not changed.
I second that.
Thank you, Josh, thank you, Paul. Okay, any discussion on waiving the reading of the findings of fact? Okay, all in favor? All right, unanimous, moving on.
I will make a motion that we approve the amendment to the approved subdivision and site plan for the market Cumberland Forside located at the Office Commercial South Zone at one oh two US Route One, tax assessor map R zero one lot thirteen B, subject to the limitation of approval, the standard condition of approval, and the thirteen proposed conditions of approval.
I second that.
Thank you, Josh, thank you, Paul. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, all in favor? All opposed, unanimous, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, moving on, item F-two, public hearing for a site plan review for the Grange Hall Pub at Longwoods Preserve, located in a contract zone in the Rural Residential One Zone at seventy-six Longwood Road, tax assessor map R zero three lots thirteen and six A for a farm-to-table restaurant and pub. Owner Synergiosity LLC, Representative Jeff Reed from Sevian Maher. So Carla, you want, Josh has something to say.
Yeah, I wasn't here last meeting for the site plan pre-application process, but I have reviewed the minutes and watched the video of the meeting, and I don't believe that my absence will affect my ability to hear this item, but I will recuse myself at the pleasure of the board.
I move that we accept Josh's input on this subject, agenda item, with no restrictions.
Thank you, Paul, thank you. Discussion on that? All in favor? All opposed, and abstaining? Josh is abstaining, motion carries, okay. So moving on, Carla, would you like to take us through the basics and especially the flash of recent updates?
Yes, so this project came before you last month for sketch plan review, and a full presentation was provided by the applicant engineer. There was a discussion of the waivers that were being requested, and at this meeting, the board would need to actually act on any of those waivers that may still be required. And the reason I say it in that way is that there has been back and forth, as there usually is, between the towns engineer who reviews the plans and the applicant engineer who has designed the plans. And in this particular case, the towns engineer, Al Palmer, found a lot of, what I would say fairly minor issues that he listed in his review. And the applicant engineer wrote a response letter last week about each of those things. I forwarded that to the towns engineer and asked if any of those things that he had initially found could be removed, because I really like to bring the application to the board with as most current information as there is. There's no sense, in my opinion, for you to be wrestling with a whole bunch of technical issues that are no longer applicable, they've been addressed. So that is where we are tonight, my apologies if you got things last minute, and that's not how you would like them to be in the future, I can certainly change my ways, but this is how it's worked in the past, and you know, my role as a planner is to act as a liaison between the planning board and the applicant and the project, and I try very hard to be neutral in that and making sure just that the aspects of the ordinance that need to be addressed by the application have been addressed fully, and bring that to you for you to make the final call on that, so that's where we are tonight.
Okay, before we move on, can you speak to, the list went from twenty-three issues down to seven, and your findings, like at the beginning of the packet, do you think that that's all still accurate?
I think some of them can be modified once we go through them, once Jeff Reed is able to speak to each of them. You look at the waivers, without having the waivers acted upon, I couldn't make positive findings. So it's this process tonight of really going through everything and seeing what we're left with at the end of the evening.
I personally have no issue with the timing of what the planning department did, it's just very difficult, I think, for the board to get information with, you know, a four-hundred-and-sixty-page-ish packet with changes, and it's, you know, six hours to showtime, and
I understand.
So, and that's not on you, so I will defer to the board here tonight, whether everybody is comfortable moving forward, and especially with the changes that went from twenty-three issues down to seven. Just, and if people aren't comfortable, please speak up. So, moving on, before we move on to the applicant, any questions of Carla on this, from the board? Okay, all right, take it away.
Thanks, so again, my name is Jeff Reed, I work with Sevian Maher Engineers, and I'm here tonight to present the Grange Hall Pub project at Longwoods Preserve for Alex Timpson and Synergiosity. I think pretty much, almost everybody was here last time, and is familiar with the project, especially through the contract zone procedure and everything else, the workshops that we've had. So I'm going to kind of run through and just give a brief summary of the project for the benefit of the board, as well as any members of the public here who may want to speak after I do this.
As well as any outstanding issues, if you would.
Correct, so you want me to address those now or after?
As you go through.
Okay, so the Grange Hall Pub project is located on a sixty-one and a half acre parcel off of Longwoods Road down by the Falmouth Line, properties identified as lot six A and lot thirteen on tax map R three. As I'd mentioned before, it's been through a contract zone procedure, so we have an approved, an enforced contract zone for the property that will account for the uses that we're proposing. The underlying district is Rural Residential Number One. One of the unique features of this project is of the sixty-one and a half acres, you know, roughly fifty-five are going to be dedicated to a conservation parcel that will be used for combination of farming and public trail use. The applicant has been working with Main Farmland Trust, as well as the Cumberland Shabig Land Trust, to develop those possibilities. What's left is roughly a six and a half, just under seven acre development parcel, which is what the project that we're looking at today is going to be located on. If you look at this parcel here, the parcel fronts to Longwoods Road on the east, to the north is each east branch of the Piscataqua River. To the west is Falmouth and some existing farm fields, a little bit of Falmouth Country Club, and there are some, there's some existing residential development to the south. The project itself is going to include a three thousand, three thousand four hundred nineteen square foot farm-to-table restaurant and brew pub. Improvements are going to include a twenty-foot access drive that'll be located over the top of the existing driveway to the farmhouse. There will be fifty-nine parking spaces total, forty-three spaces adjacent to serve the restaurant and brew pub, two of which will be ADA accessible, and then two other eight-space parking areas to serve trailheads for the conservation parcel. The project will be served by a new private well that has been installed, two new septic systems that are going to be about sixteen hundred gallons a day each, combination of underground and overhead electric, and there will be some site lighting as well, one light at the entrance, and then some pole-mounted lights at the parking area to provide safe access to, for patrons to the restaurant and brew pub. In all, the project will include about three and a half acres of developed disturbed area, just under an acre of impervious, which works out really nicely because it simplifies the stormwater permitting for the process. There are three other, sorry, I haven't been keeping up with my notes here. There are three other permit applications that we're going to need, as well as the site plan application here. One would be a main DEP stormwater permit by rule, which has already been submitted, and we're waived about a week before that's going to be returned. I have had some interaction with the EP on that, everything is so far. The second application that we're going to need is a main DOT driveway entrance permit. So Longwoods Road, Route Nine is a state highway, so we need approval from DOT to access the parcel and improve the existing site entrance, which we have, and it's included in the application package. The third will be a US Army Corps self-notification application. It's something that we have to submit to the Army Corps two weeks ahead of construction. We've already got roughed out, we already have been in touch with the Army Corps, and that is because at the very end of the patio, we're actually going to disturb about eleven hundred square feet of wetland in the field. Nothing's going to be built on top of it, but because of the elevations, in order to tail the grading out to the edge, we're going to have to fill in a little bit of that edge. It's not a high-value wetland, it's not critical habitat, it's just part of the field that we have to extend into. So probably the easiest thing for me to do to talk about the waivers, and I'll ask Carla, and I'm assuming all of you got a copy, but probably haven't had a chance to look at the comment response that I'd provided this afternoon for the review comments, or the updated seven review comments. Probably, if I can bear with me here, I'll skip out of this, and I'll pull up the actual letter. Format is similar to the other one that I had done, in that I list, I list Al's comments, and then we have a response underneath, so this way you'll be able to see both the comment from the review engineer and then our reaction to that. And the first, the first item here is, is the waivers. So that'll be, let's go to full screen mode here. So, as you can see right here with the subdivision site plan application, we'd asked for four different waivers, a market study, landscape.
That first one's supposed to be the
I apologize, that was a cut and paste from the peer reviews letter. The first one was not the market study, but that was the
The high-intensity soil survey.
So the A, B, C, D is not correct, but the line items underneath are. So the first one, if you look at my cursor here, was for a high-intensity soil survey. Okay. And we'd requested a waiver from that, provided some backup information. It was supported by the towns engineer on this, so there's no response required. The second one was asking for a waiver for a hydrogeologic study, and the towns engineer had a couple of issues with that, which I believe we've addressed both of them. The first was that the requesting a waiver for the Department of Health and Human Services of the separation of the onsite well and onsite subsurface wastewater disposal system. Okay, and what he's talking about is, there's a minimum setback between a septic field and a water supply, okay? In this case, we want to reduce that, we have a unique situation here where the well and the septic fields are hydro, they're isolated hydrologically, so they're on the opposite side of the hill, so there's no real connection. Rather than beating this to death, I mean, we had submitted the application for the variance to DHHS, we have received preliminary approval. So I guess in my mind, it's a done issue. DHHS has approved the location of the well in relation to the septic systems.
Wasn't Al's response to your response identical to before, though?
It was, and I'm not sure why. I think he is concerned about a final approval, okay? So what we've received is preliminary from DHHS, and they had stated in that memo that there will need to be a final approval, basically reviewing water quality test results and a couple of other things, before they authorize this as a water source project. But that's, that needs to happen before the well is put online, and I guess we're viewing that as an item that can be addressed through the building permit application process in the Code Enforcement Office, as well as kind of one of the other issues that he had on the septic system and the design, you know, they've been designed by a qualified licensed site evaluator, and I believe we've shown what we need to show from a site plan approval process, the soils, and we the facility will, the lot will take the septic systems. Final details and design are going to be worked out a little bit through the, again, through the building permit application process, because they tie back to the architectural plans for the building as far as splitting piping systems and plumbing routing and that sort of thing, which is typically not gone through at this level. The architectural plans usually aren't completed until well after site plan approval.
Go ahead, Paul.
Jeff, do you agree with the assessment that you'll be producing over two thousand gallons per day of wastewater?
Probably, but that does not necessarily require an engineered system. If you were to, the way that the subsurface wastewater system, disposal system rules read is if you have a single system that's going to handle more than two thousand gallons a day, it has to be an engineered system, and Al is absolutely right, it requires amounting analysis and all these other items. So what happens is, in a lot of cases, they'll split the flows, okay? So instead of having one two-thousand gallon a day system, you have two sixteen-hundred gallon a day systems. It, it happens a lot, and it's not anything out of the normal. It works out well on this project here, because they do want to separate the kitchen flows and the kitchen waste from the regular black water, the bathrooms, and that sort of thing with the rest of the facility, they'd like to keep them separate, and it works out that, it works out well.
So, do you have, or will you have approval from DHHS for splitting the quantity of water?
It doesn't need DHHS approval.
Well, according to, according to the towns engineer, it does, I think, or at least we recommend the confirmation be sought from DHHS that this is acceptable, you know, in one of his comments, where he's talking about the engineered system and the total, yeah.
What I'm saying is, it's not, it's not typical to require a statement from DHHS in a situation like this. We've done multiple other projects, and it, they're
As, let me just back up a second, as a non, as a non, as a non-engineer,
Yep.
this is a fairly technical issue that he's saying, this almost always, or in the typical situation, this is not how it would be done. So as a board member, I'm thinking, I mean, one only, probably one of you can be right, or one of you can have the best solution, and that's what we need, I guess, is to be convinced that you have a very
That is viable, and that other people do this, and that it's a normal thing to do. It's been our experience, we've worked on other projects where we have done this before. It's just another way to accomplish the subsurface wastewater disposal approval. Oops, sure, you can introduce yourself.
Alex Timpson, founder of Synergiosity and founder of the project. So we did submit septic designs from Mark Sensi, which is a very recognized professional site evaluator.
Yeah, I saw his letter.
He wouldn't have designed the site septic systems for two leach fields unless he thought it was totally acceptable. And if you pull up a site map with a topo, you'll see why he did that, because the watershed for each leach field is separate unto itself and also flows away from where the well is. It's also on sixty-one acres, fifty-four of which will never be developed.
And how many wells will you have?
One.
Okay, and that well, the requirement was you have ninety feet, including, what, twenty, twenty feet of bedrock? Ninety feet of pipe, presumably, because you're
The septic design is all in the package that was submitted at the end of June.
Okay, thank you.
And he also wrote a letter to that effect.
Yeah, I saw the letter.
Just algae blooms, so I think that all needs to be taken into account here. The, and each system can be designed, we've confirmed it with two plumbing contractors, that will not be a problem to split the flow from this facility, so each leach field is receiving less than two thousand gallons a day. But that specific plumbing detail will be addressed when we go for a building permit. So Al Goral's comment was somewhat a building permit issue, in the opinion of Jeff Reed and myself.
Except that here we are talking about a waiver that, for a building permit, that we'll never
No, no, we're not talking about, well, we're talking about a geohydro thing, which Mark Sensi wrote a letter, and he also submitted two septic designs, so his reputation is on the line here.
Okay, thank you.
So just as, just as a point of reference, Mark's, Mark's memo was included in the initial comment response. The H H E two hundred forms, the septic system designs, were included in the original permit application in the impedics, and those are both signed and stamped by Mark. And again, those are, those are viewed by the local plumbing inspector here in town, as well as DHHS before their install.
Carla, what do you think it would take to get Al, Al sign off on this? Just one more review, or what?
Personally, I think it's listed as a condition of approval that the outstanding issues from the town engineer be addressed prior to the pre-construction conference, and I think that's going to be accomplished when DHHS signs off on it, and when Bill Longley looks at the plumbing permit application for the design, so
Because we're not waiving anything in regards to the approval of the wastewater system, of them splitting. Nothing that we're going to waive is going to allow them to split the system if that's not allowable. All they're looking for, the waiver would just address not doing a hydrogeological study to make sure that the plumes don't ever reach the well.
That's, that's...
Well, I shouldn't really say it that way, because they, they... To have more data to ensure that the plumes don't ever reach the well.
Yeah, and the only reason I brought it up is because they are linked, even though you're right technically. The reason that Alton is saying we don't recommend granting the waiver is because of the issues that we were just talking about, I believe. It was a little more complicated than just the why not, why, why do this study?
Well, then...
So, again, we're reading from his first, his earlier comments. Again, just trying to get clarification.
Yep, so what about, maybe what we can do is, subject to the board's desires. If we do waive it, we could put a condition of approval in there that states that it's conditional upon the proposed plumbing design being approved by the local plumbing inspector and DHHS, which is the normal course of events. And if that doesn't get approved, and they've got to go to a single engineered system, then maybe they come, have to come back and, you know, basically cancels out the waiver.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I think we're, we're fine with that. We'd be happy with that. But I would also like to point out... You need to be up here if you're going to talk.
If DHSS signs off on it, then we don't need their approval.
I guess DH, to me, DHHS signing off on it would be their approval.
Correct.
Not specific, just through the normal course of inspections.
They're agreeing not to review it. They're not reviewing it, they're not approving it or rejecting it. They're just reviewing not to review it.
Okay.
And I, I'd like to point out too, that, and I just, just kind of the wording of the, the comment. You know, it's the potential need for approval as an engineered wastewater disposal. He's not saying this has to be, this is, this is it. He's saying you might need that. And that will be determined and evaluated as this is submitted to DHHS.
But this is also separate from the, you do need a final DHHS waiver approval on the waiving, the location...
From the well to the septic.
Yeah.
Correct.
We already have that.
The distance, you do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It was, it was included in the...
Okay.
Response to the first. I believe we attached this one as well.
If, if I could just add some clarification, the hydrogeologic, uh, study is often a waiver request, if you think about it. It's often there. And the reason is that, well, if a project's on water and sewer, and it doesn't need it, it's a non-issue. The hydrogeologic is really needed when you have a clustered subdivision, uh, lots close together, wells and septics close together. And it's really important to know which way the plumes are going to make sure that one septic doesn't affect another person's well. And as I said, I think we have 60 acres here, and it's really... From the information that we have, I think, I think it, it will work. But you have a, a catch-all that if, if we can't get it, if they can't get it to work, then they can't get the permit. They can't get, they can't go forward. It would come back to the board as a different kind of system.
That's right, yeah. That, I guess that was going to be my question, is if it doesn't work, and we're talking an engineered waste system, disposal system, you all are coming back to the table and addressing that with us.
I'm comfortable with that. I'm not, I'm not worried.
Carla, do we actually even need that as a condition of approval? If it, if it's in the records as a split system, if that changes, that's a material change. Would they have to come back to us regardless?
Yes.
Whether it's a condition of approval? So, we really don't need a condition of approval?
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on that topic?
Okay. I guess I, I agree with everything you say, said, Carla. I guess, for me, um, when we don't, when we can waive that hydro, hydrogeological study, from my point of view is when an engineer tells me we can waive that study, you know?
Interesting.
And, um, and Al, in this case, is the one that's, you know, advocating for us. So, that's, that's the hard spot that we're in. But, um, I think we have a solution. So, moving on to the next topic.
Next. Uh, the third, uh, request was for the market study. Um, and the, the peer review engineer, the town's engineers, is basically deferring to the board on that as to whether that's needed or not. It was an item we spoke about at the pre-application meeting.
Yeah, Paul, you had some thoughts on that.
Just a, just a question on that again. A little anecdotal, but over the last 22 years or so, I've watched these two restaurants down near the railroad tracks thrive and then fail. So, I guess my question, I guess number one is, why wouldn't you want a market study, given the amount of money that will have to be invested? But number two, if the restaurant itself, uh, and that component of this project wasn't successful, what in general would, would happen to the entire project?
Well, there are options built into the, to the contract zone, where it, it, it could be developed into potentially, I think, a maximum of two house lots, based on that six acres. I think was one of the, uh, one of the stipulations in the contract.
I'm sorry, that it could do what?
Uh, you could develop the, you could remove the restaurant and develop up to two residential house lots in there.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
That was outlined in the contract zone. And the lot, lot sizes were, were controlled for that point, so that it wouldn't be 20 houses. It would be, it's just, it's just two.
And the conservation area would remain with the trust? Is the, I saw, it was the main farm? I mean, I know Chabig and...
Correct.
Comber, but do they, they don't currently own it, correct?
No, I think, uh, I think some of the deeds have been in place. You guys own it already?
Maybe talk about it. Oh, yeah, yes, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, back to my first question.
Sure.
Why wouldn't you want a market study?
Sure.
Because there's no other restaurant that has 60 acres with three and a half acres of walking trails, a sculpture garden. There's no other comparable for this, 15 minutes from Portland. So, a, a market study would be so hypothetical. In my opinion, it would be a waste of money.
That's an answer.
I mean, to, to me, it's, it's their risk and not really our risk.
Only if, if there's an eyesore after it flops. In this case, I think there's a, a plan B that isn't, uh, you know, too detrimental.
And in that case, it's not going to be an eyesore anyway, because the, the development, and even if we cut off the, the development parcel is up over the top of the hill. You can't see it from Longwoods Road.
Yep.
And that's, that's by design as well.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I mean, it was our, as pointed out, it's our decision, and I had to ask that question. So, I understand the answer, and I hope, uh, it's tremendously successful, believe me.
Fingers crossed.
All right, moving down the list, uh, any other questions on the market study before we... Okay. So, the next waiver was...
The next waiver was, uh, again, one that we had spoken about, uh, at the, uh, pre-application last month, which was for the landscape plan. And request for a waiver from a form, formal, uh, landscape plan in this case here, where everything was up beyond. We had view shed buffers, we had natural buffers and hundreds of feet of woods around this thing. What, what, what would be the value there and was, would that be necessary? And, you know, we did include a landscape plan in our application package. We're asking for a waiver from the requirement.
Can I, uh, jump in again?
Yeah.
So, in, in the ordinance, something that could apply is one of the purposes was to break up parking areas, soften the appearance of the development, for instance, around the building, protect abutting properties, which I don't think applies here. So, I don't think, I think I mentioned last time, I don't see the need for it. But do you expect you would do anything near the building or in the parking?
Go ahead.
So, one of the reasons we don't want to commit to a landscaping plan right now is we are interviewing local farmers. And a lot of the landscaping farmer is what that farmer's going to plant in terms of vegetables and wedding flowers. And, um, so I don't want to commit to a plan until the farmer that we form a relationship with sprinkles holy water on it, so to speak. So, that, that's the reason. We, we are going to have some pretty terrific landscaping details in the terms of flowers and berms. It would be foolish not to in this day and age, uh, because it just makes everything more aesthetically pleasing. And, uh, you know, actions are stronger than words. We've already planted two landscaping berms on the, uh, conservation parcel, which are obviously not required. But that's kind of proof positive that we understand the value of, of landscaping from, honestly, from a business perspective, but also from a, an aesthetic perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Carla?
Josh, go ahead.
In the absence of a landscaping plan in the packet that gets approved, is there any check and balance of, to prevent them, and this is devil's advocate. Is there any check and balance to prevent them from doing something that we would likely find to be unacceptable, were it ever presented in a landscape plan?
Like plant a bunch of invasive species.
Whatever, you, you know.
Loose stray farm?
I, I mean, I, I almost, you know, and, and does a landscape plan in the, in the instance of a farm, does that need to cover the planting? I mean, I wouldn't think that we would need a landscaping plan to cover farmland and what is going to be planted as crops or similar within the farmland.
I think with this, you, you just look at it as a common sense issue. And it's a huge parcel. It's almost all in conservation. There are no, that I don't think, any butters here, perhaps, that, that are concerned about the impact of the visibility of the project on their properties. So, I don't know why you would require it. And, and I think Mr. Timson makes an interesting point, that it's a work in progress. They're going to look and see how everything falls out and who's going to be there and how they want to do it.
You, you had mentioned a sculpture garden, too. Would that, does that impact a decision on our part? Like if we're putting up sculptures, is that a landscaping design thing?
Well, as long as our code officer, Bill Longley, doesn't consider it a structure.
Okay.
And require setbacks and every, uh, I don't, I don't think it's an issue.
I guess I could have a swing set in my backyard, so I didn't have to check with Bill on that one.
Good.
So, those, those are the waiver requests. If you like, um, we can run down through the rest of the comments, or we can do that later.
Specifically on landscaping, from Route 9, will we be able to see the parking lot?
It's over the top of the hill.
Yep.
You list nine employees, but you have three parking spots. Does that, I think I brought that up last time, but that, I mean, what? Is that good? Does that work?
So, the, the, the parking space calculation, we came to, um, based on a, a, a couple of different things. And, and, and part of it was, uh, patrons and number of seats per table.
Yeah, yeah, I saw the calculation.
Right. And then, and then the other was, was a multiplier for number of employees to parking spaces. And that's just the way the calculation worked out.
So, if you needed, you'd over, put in the overflow or one of those?
Potentially. Um, or they'd park on the far side of the parking lot, or there's also, and not that we want to really kind of mix these uses, but, I mean, there is trail parking nearby. There's, there's, there, there are places to park.
Is that overflow parking visible from Route 9?
The, the overflow parking that would be used in this case is still going to be on the other side of the hill. There are areas that, that we've identified that are closer to the top and around in the event that there's, uh, there's a special event there. And that there, you know, that we don't have enough parking places. We had, we've identified areas, um, in the field...
Yep.
That can be mowed and then used to, to park cars if there's, uh, if there's a wedding or there's a, something like that. Those events are going to be, I think, based on the, the permitting for that, less than eight per year. And those would be on the, uh, on the long road side of the hill. But they would be beyond or outside that, that protected view shed, uh, along the, along the edge.
Well, it, it seems like there are eight grassed, grassed, parallel parking spaces that you would be able to see from the road for trail access.
Yeah, it's a lower trail.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then traffic study? That, that was, uh, one of the waivers originally, right?
I, I, I believe so. I mean, we, we have our DOT permit. I'm not sure why we would need a traffic study at this point.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you for taking us through the waiver. So, um, further questions from the board? Or there, is there more that you wanted to go through just in general?
Uh, no. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to leave it there. If you have, like I said, if you had questions, there were, there were seven items that were remaining from the review engineer's initial list. I, I have them here, if you want to go through them. If you don't, I'm okay with that, too.
Go ahead, Josh.
My opinion is, we're still going to have the condition of approval that all these have to get satisfactorily addressed. I, you know, a lot of this is, we've got to check with the architect and find out why they made that comment. And, and I'm fine with, we're, we're not going to have a resolution now. We just need to have a resolution prior to, you know, the town signing off on, at the pre-construction pro, conference.
Okay. Further questions of Jeff from the board? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing at this point. If anybody would like to come up and speak on the matter. If you can introduce yourself, please.
Sure, hi, I'm Chris Cabot with the Chabig and Cumberland Land Trust.
Okay.
Spoken at previous meetings for this, but just want to reiterate that the conservation easement for this property, the 54 acres that will be permanently conserved, is already completed. Uh, and we are thrilled about that. So, that assignment has happened from Maine Farmland Trust to CCLT. So, we're the official holders of that conservation easement now. And, uh, the other aspects, I'm happy to talk about the trail parking or any of the trail questions that come up. But generally, I've walked all the trails. They seem well-designed and have really minimal impact on the ecology there. So, I don't have any concerns about the trail layout or design or, or how they're constructed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public want to speak?
I thought I'd just sit in the back and say nothing. Barville, Cumberland Center. I'm not speaking in favor or against the project or anything, but I, I do have a fair amount of experience with, uh, septic systems and design and, uh, how they work. And one thing I'd just point out, uh, it was a few years ago, a number of years ago, it is now, separation between well and septic was 200 feet in the town of Cumberland. At the time, the state standard was 100 feet, but the town adopted a, a 200-foot separation. And, and, you know, in all honesty, part of that was perhaps to use that as a, uh, a housing cap tool on some level. But anyways, the science, as we developed it, and the state developed the science, it, we found that the, the fact, the 100-foot separation was excessive. It hasn't changed, but the science doesn't bear out that the plumes, uh, really go that far. And I think, to my mind of, of experience with having built on a number of constrained lots, last, the last house I built on Chabig, Chabig Island, uh, was a, a constant flow and employed two septic tanks and a, a continuous flow system with a drip, a very sophisticated system for a very small lot. So, and looking at the proposal for two septic, uh, fields, you know, that, that, to me, strikes as a very, uh, safe and, uh, effective way to deal with it, because you get, you can split out your gray water from your black water and, and you control your... and, and you control your, your, your fields better. So, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh, the site evaluators and the designs. And I, I think if you look at the history of, of septic design over the years, uh, we're, we're improving them every day. The, the technology's improving. The last one I built, uh, not the last one, but the second house up on Phippsburg, it was a, a system that looked like four octopuses that, uh, branched out in every different direction. And it, again, it was a very sophisticated design for a, a very, you know, a rock field. So, uh, this is, I don't think there's anything to be overly concerned about, but I appreciate the comments from the board. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Bob. Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. Any further questions of Carla or the applicant?
Uh, hey, Carla. I know Al's not here. Any, no one else from Goral Palmer is here?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain motions.
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is talk about waivers. Is that a correct statement? I think so. So I gotta flip through here. There's a lot of pages. All right, so just to verify, you're requesting four waivers, high-intensity soil survey, hydrogeologic study, market study, landscape plan.
That's correct.
Okay. I will make a motion that due to the unique characteristics of the site and the project, that we waive the requirement for a high-intensity soil survey.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I will make a motion, uh, that based on the unique characteristics of the site and the project, as well as the reviews that will happen regardless in the process of this project, that we waive the requirement for a hydrogeologic study.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
I will make a motion that due to the unique characteristics of the site and the project, we waive the requirement for a market study.
A second.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous?
I'll make a motion that due to the unique characteristics of the site and the project, we waive the requirement for a landscape plan.
A second.
We have a second, yes?
Second, yes.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So, review findings of fact. Okay, this is gonna take a while here. Right, those have not been read before. And those start on what page? Uh-oh. Okay. Is that what I'm looking at here? Okay, so utilization of site. There are no known environmental, environmentally sensitive areas on the parcel. The site is not located within habitat for rare and endangered plants and animals or significant wildlife or fisheries habitat. Based on the above findings of fact, the board defines the standards of this section have been met. And Carla, you're gonna correct me if any of these are still not accurate, correct?
Yes.
Traffic circulation and parking. The town engineer has made comments regarding, wait a minute.
It's a, it's a complicated finding, because it's traffic circulation and parking, um, and it goes on and on. And the catch-all finding at the time that I wrote this was that there were still issues about the parking plan. Jeff, do you recall what Al's concern was with the parking plan? 'Cause I can't, I can't recall what he?
Wasn't it signage? It was the only one I remember.
Yeah, there was, it was signage for the, um, parking spaces that were at the trailhead, I think.
I think maybe for the overflow, but I don't remember if it was for the overflow.
We did update the plan, uh, and I believe that comment, when it was one of the, however many that went away.
I think.
Yeah, so there's the spaces along the access road for the trail, and those are now shown on the plan.
Subject to the proposed condition of approval, the board finds that.
Yeah.
Because it will just, it, it will fall under the town engineer.
Right.
You know, rectification.
There was one question Ann had about ADA parking. There was only two spaces. Is that adequate?
Yeah.
All right, subject to the standard condition of approval, is that right, Josh?
Proposed condition of approval.
Proposed condition of approval. The board finds the standards of this section have been met. C, oh no. Oh, Jesus.
You're at five, building, parking, building and parking placement.
Okay, building and parking place. This is broken-up funny. Building and parking placement. There, the building and parking plan is appropriate to the type and scale of the development. Based on the above findings of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Stormwater management and erosion control. The town engineer has reviewed and approved the stormwater and erosion control plan. Based on the above findings of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Water sewer utilities and fire protection. The town engineer has made comments regarding the water and septic systems, which need to be addressed.
Josh, do you wanna?
Subject to the proposed condition of approval.
Subject to the proposed condition of appro- of approval based on, uh, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Water protection, the town engineer has requested additional information. Is that still?
Same, same thing.
Hold on, can I just ask, so in your response, most recently, the July nineteenth, you talk about, there, you've got a preliminary approval from DHHS, but you need final approval for the drinking water program?
Yes.
And that comes from DHHS or some, okay. Thank you.
All right, so is that still valid, the town engineers requested additional?
No, I would strike that, and I would strike the same thing under the water quality. And aquifer protection, it would say that the site is not located in the town aquifer protection area with the proposed conditions of approval regarding the septic and well separation and septic design. The board finds the standards have been met.
Okay.
Uh, we're not gonna have a proposed condition of approval for the septic design.
You're just gonna leave it to the DHHS.
I don't think we, well, we did, talked about the fact that the, the septic system is going to have to be approved by the local plumbing inspector. And, and I do think maybe we have a proposed condition of approval about the, you know, drinking water program, final approval.
Okay.
So I'm not sure that really fits the septic system or not.
Well, it's under water protection, water quality.
It's certainly under this, the number finding of fact, maybe not the subs. But I, I think we usually talk about, we usually do a finding for the, you know, letter finding, not every single sub, except when there's something specific.
Yep.
And so you are proposing what for this section, water protection, to strike, still one and two?
Yes, take, take what's written out, leave in the finding that the site is not located within the aquifer protection area. And then that, what were you saying, Josh, you wanted to see the subject to?
I would just do it as a, subject to the proposed condi- proposed condition of approval.
Okay, so, under E, water protection. One is okay, two is okay, three is okay, and at the bottom, the site is not located within the town aquifer protection area. Based, uh, on the proposed condition of approval, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Are we happy with that, Josh?
Sure.
Okay. This is why I don't like doing this stuff on the fly.
I know.
Okay. F, floodplain management. The area of the site proposed for development is not located within a floodplain. Based on the above finding of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. G, historic and archaeological resources. There is a letter on file from the Maine Historic Preservation Commission stating that there are no historic or archaeological resources on the site. Based on the above finding of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Exterior lighting. Are we still happy with those yellow highlighted areas?
I was, uh, expecting some cut sheets for some of the fixtures. Had you provided those?
There were in the response that we'd provided before this one.
Okay, that was just, I was, uh, asking for a little additional information about the fixtures and making sure they were downward facing and shielded and so forth. And, uh, that was provided in his response today. So I think you can say that, uh, acceptable lighting information was provided.
Okay, so if it's all good, we don't need to say that, right?
He said it.
Okay, so, based on the above findings of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Buffering and landscaping.
Subject to the waiver granted.
Yeah.
Subject to the granted waiver, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. J, noise. The contract zone agreement states that amplified music is limited to the hours of ten AM to ten PM. Indoor music is allowed until, uh?
Yeah, that's, that gotta be a typo. Eleven PM?
Eleven AM or PM?
Eleven PM.
PM.
Okay. Indoor music is allowed until eleven PM. Based on the above findings of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. Okay, storage of materials. Under one, none of the above items will be stored on-site. Under two, one dumpster is shown on the plan and will be adequately screened. Under three, there are no safety hazards to children on-site. Based on the above findings of fact, the board stip- finds the standards of this section have been met. Capacity of the applicant, technical ability. The applicant has utilized a professional land surveyor, engineer, architect, and licensed soils evaluator in preparation of the application. Financial capacity, the applicant has provided a letter stating the net worth of the applicant and then his ability to fund the project. Based on the above findings of fact, the board finds the standards of this section have been met. M, design and performance standards. This project is not subject to any town design standards. And I think that's it.
Jeff, question, somewhere you list your, our hours of operation from eleven-thirty AM to nine PM, so that's not correct. On one of the pages. So actually, it's eleven.
Those are our normal operating hours, but like in the case of a wedding, it might go a little later.
Okay, all right.
And, and then along that line, on the application, you say that your event hours are limited from eleven AM to twelve PM. I think that's a typo too on your application.
Actually, that's intentional, 'cause if the music starts, stops at eleven, we need an hour to clear people out.
Yeah, but that would be twelve AM.
But that's twelve AM.
Yeah, and it's twelve PM.
As it's typed in your application, yes.
It's twelve PM, right? That's the correct one. And I, I thought we. I think it's twelve PM.
You have one.
No, midnight is twelve AM.
You have, you have one hour in your application. I believe you want more than that. Okay.
I just want an hour from eleven o'clock at night.
To clear out. No music. Got it.
Okay, so we have to adopt the findings of fact, is that right?
Make a motion, we adopt the findings of fact as amended.
A second, Ted.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Jumping again.
Yeah, me too.
Unanimous. So, Josh.
Carla, we don't have the NERPA. Is that correct?
Right.
We still need that.
It's, well, it's a permit by rule, so it's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah, 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 yep. So all those ten are still applicable, as best as I can tell. And let's add one for the final approval of the DHHS drinking water program. Which?
Right.
So they won't come out, and this is a little bit of chicken versus the egg. They won't come out and do the inspection for that final approval until we have that water line plumbed in. We don't have a building to plummet into right now. You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
So we provided a water quality sample of the, of the well, and we, um, have gotten, uh, a quote from a professional water treatment expert. It's a five-thousand-dollar filter system to treat, uh, a little bit of arsenic in the well. So, and I also think that will be addressed as the part of the building permit process.
Yeah, Carl, I'm, I'm assuming Bill's gonna require that as part of his.
Right, I don't think you need to add it.
Sir, take it out of occupancy. I'm fine striking it. So we got ten.
Yep.
Correct? Uh, I will make a motion that we approve, uh, site plan review for the Grange Hall Longwoods Preserve located in a contract zone in the rural residential one zone at seventy-six Longwoods Road, tax, uh, surmap R zero-three, lots thirteen and six A, subject to the limitation of approval, the standard condition of approval, and the ten proposed conditions of approval.
A second, Ted.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you very much.
It's probably hard to tell, but I'm a fan of this project. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jeff, have you brought the plans for signature?
I have not. I can bring those tomorrow morning.
Oh, no. And you don't have the one for the mark either?
No.
The two, the two that I reminded you of twice this week.
Calling them out on air.
Well, it's just tricky to get their signatures after the fact, but we'll do it. We'll make it happen.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I just wanna thank the planning board and Carla and Christina for taking all these notes.
I hope you guys have good burgers.
And veggie burgers.
Okay, moving on to item number three, which, uh, is another public hearing for recommendation to town council on proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code, Chapter two-fifty, subdivision of land, attachment one, subdivision road standards, Table two, geometric standard design standards. To amend requirements for residential access, less than or equal to fifty vehicles per day and two-fifty attachment one to three, to clarify, a total width of thirty-six feet to include easements on each side for snow storage and utilities. Carla, anything to add before we get to Bill?
No, this is all Bill here.
Anything from the board?
It's engineering, so I'm gonna zone out for a little bit and let him.
Anything from the board before we hear from Bill? Okay, take it away, Bill.
She didn't call me out. I, I had my plan ready. This is a, an interesting, uh, uh, project. Several years ago, we came before the board and asked that, uh, consideration for a private road standard that was consistent in the street construction portion of our zoning, as well in the subdivision, as well in the subdivision section. When we started building these roads, it just seemed very strange why they were so wide. What we were trying to do was shrink down the footprint, excuse me. And what I found is that, uh, we inadvertently, sorry, can't swallow. We inadvertently left a, um, five-foot storage area for snow storage outside of the thirty-six-foot easement. So instead of a thirty-six easement, essentially, we created a forty-six-foot easement, which is only four feet smaller than a normal fifty-foot right-of-way, which we require for all our subdivisions that, you know, have in excess of fifty vehicle trips per day. Fifty, we, we calculate ten trips per day per household. So a hundred houses is gonna be a fifty-foot right-of-way, and five houses is gonna be a forty-six-foot right-of-way. Didn't make a lot of sense. So we came back with this diagram tonight, uh, in part one. It's, it's almost the identical explanation in the next item on your agenda to. in part one. It's almost the identical explanation in the next item on your agenda, to include that five-foot of snow storage in, in your calculation of the thirty-six-foot right-of-way. So, in the diagram, you see here, two vehicles, each in a nine-foot travel lane, and we have two-foot shoulders. So effectively, there's eleven feet from the center of the road to the edge of the road. And then, that's twenty-two feet, and then there's seven feet on each side for snow storage, you know, plus I guess you could include the two-foot shoulders as well. So tonight, we are looking for a recommendation from the planning board to go forward to the town council to hopefully agree with this explanation I gave you tonight, to basically shrink that thirty-six-foot right-of-way back to a thirty-six-foot right-of-way and not a forty-six-foot right-of-way, which we have currently in the ordinance. So, it's essentially five foot on each side, and now it's included in the thirty-six-foot and not excluded from the thirty-six-foot. That's the Reader's Digest version. Happy to get into any of the minutia if you'd like, but it's essentially the same explanation I'm gonna give you on the next item, too. And in the table, I think you'll see in the table, there was, there was one line, "Must include five feet snow storage inside easement on each side." We tried to simplify it instead of rewrite the whole thing, so if you want to wordsmith that, you're welcome to it. But that's really all that was changed here for the less than fifty vehicle, vehicles per day standard. If you remember, well, you may not remember, but in the old ordinance for street construction, we had roads that were twelve, fourteen, and eighteen feet in width, and we standardized them all to eighteen feet and used this template. So we got rid of the umpteen different versions of road standards.
Okay, sounds reasonable. Josh?
Bill, two questions. One, at the top left and top right of your diagram, it says easement to be struck from below text, but there is no word easement in any of the text below, so I'm a little unclear.
We can strike that as well.
Okay, we'll just strike that. Strike it off. My other question is, we've built some roads since this standard was put in place. Are there five-foot easements in people's deeds at this point? And is there anything we can do to give them their five feet back?
I, I think that's a really good, good idea and a good request. I think Bill Longley and I can work together on looking back to when this was changed, just a couple of years ago, to see if we can turn back the clock. Because eliminating those easements, those would typically be on neighboring properties that they just didn't have enough right-of-way with. So this would work very nicely for a lot of those. And if you look at our tax maps, we have a lot of forty-foot wide slots of land that go to back property that now would be accessible for, under this proposal.
Great, thank you.
Paul, did you have something?
No, Bill, I, just on the, on the table itself, I was, when I first looked at it, I saw the asterisk, and I was thinking, I was looking at the bottom for a footnote. Usually, when you ask, put an asterisk, there's something at the bottom as a footnote. And then on the next page, I saw one that meant gravel, but I think that was unique to the, to the, to the lanes, rather than related to the table. So, no, I, I think it's fine. It just seemed like a different way of doing it. Took me a minute to see what, what those meant.
Did you not have this, Paul, what I have up on the screen here?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, that table.
This, this has thirty-six feet with two asterisks after it, and then it comes over to the right and said, "Must include five feet of snow storage inside easement on each side."
Yeah, no, I saw that, yeah. No, I think it's, I think it's okay.
Okay, other questions of Bill? Okay, so this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing to the public. Does anybody like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. And entertain motions.
Make a motion that we recommend to the town council to approve the proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code, Chapter 250, subdivision of land, attachment one, subdivision road standards, Table Two, geometric design standards, to amend requirements for residential access less than or equal to fifty vehicles per day, and two fifty attachment one, colon, three, to clarify, a total width of thirty-six feet to include easements on each side for snow storage and utilities.
Thank you, Josh. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item, number four, public hearing, recommendation to the town council on proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code, Chapter 315, zoning, Section 61, street construction, Section C, to amend private waste standards for a total width of thirty-six feet to include easements on each side for snow storage and utilities. Carla, anything?
No, same.
Anything from the board? No? Bill, go. Same?
Ditto.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on the matter, please come to the microphone. Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and entertain motions.
I will make a motion that we recommend to town council to approve the proposed amendments to the Cumberland Code, Chapter 315, zoning, Section 61, street construction, Section C, to amend private waste standards for a total width of thirty-six feet to include easements on each side for snow storage and utilities.
Thank you, Josh. Second?
I second that.
Thank you, Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, anybody have anything for item G, administrative matters or new business? I do not. Okay, moving on to item H, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn. Seconded.
Thank you, thank you. Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.